Welcome, everyone, to the October 17, 2022 Regular Board of Alderman Meeting. Would everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, just as for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka, absent. Alderwoman Tice, here. Alderwoman Sims, here. Alderman Weggie, here. Alderman Gould, here. Alderman Lockmiller, here. Alderwoman O'Neal, here. Alderman Shelton, here. Seven of eight members are present.
Great, thank you. Are we having a city attorney tonight? Okay, so make sure. Next on the agenda is approval or amendment of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Any objection to approving the same by acclamation? Seeing none, they will be approved. Brings us to item four, public hearing. Public hearing for RRT Restaurants LLC doing business as, I'm not going to butcher that, Sal Yum-Lemon Mexican Grill for a new conditional use permit for the property addressed at 1221 Strasser Drive within the Hanley Station Development. With that, I will gavel open the public hearing.
Good evening. Whitney Kelly, on behalf of the City of Brentwood. The applicant is taking up the former Houlihan space that was vacated over two years ago. The ordinance states that if it's been vacated for a year, they have to come back through the process for a new CUP. And she was also making, proposing exterior changes to the building, so that would have prompted new CUP as well. The Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation eight to zero at its meeting last week after some discussion on the changes to the building, and it was eight to zero. And the applicant's here to answer any questions.
Hi, my name is Christina Robles, and I'm one of the owners for RRT Restaurants, doing business as Sally Limon.
Great, thank you.
Oh, sorry. And since she is taking up an existing restaurant space, she would like to have the first and second reading tonight, if that's possible.
We have any questions for the applicant? Anybody in the public care to say anything concerning this public hearing? Now is the time to do so. If not, I will gavel close the public hearing. We'll take you up later on in the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Brings us down to item five, citizen comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board? Now is the time to do so. You'll be given up to three minutes. The only thing that we ask is that you identify yourself by name and address. Anybody online?
There are no members online.
Okay. We'll move on to mayor and alderman reports. First up is the mayor. I have a few things. That is just to make the public aware of a few events that are coming up. The first is the Volunteer for River De Pair Trash Bash on October 22. That's being put on by the Open Space Council. That's the entity, if you remember, that donated $50,000 to the city. And they have a lot of cleanup sites, and I know Alderman Weggie has signed up for one. I believe Alderwoman Tice has signed up. I've signed up for one. If anybody else has, Alderman Gould. I would encourage everyone to do that. It's a great opportunity to help pick up the debris in Black Creek and all those tributaries that dump into River De Pair and causes, one of the reasons that it floods the way that it does. And so it's a wonderful opportunity to help out and to give back, so I would encourage the public to sign up. Just go to the, go to our city webpage, and there'll be some links for it, I believe. The other thing, we do have, once again, a coffee with the mayor coming up next Thursday, the 27th. We have a residential paper shredding on November 5. And that is it for the mayor's report. Alderman Plufka is not here. Alderwoman Tice?
No report.
Alderwoman Sims?
The first of our special, special meetings near and dear that time of year. I didn't mean to rhyme just then. For Ways and Means and Budget Approval Process is tomorrow night at 5:30 here. Please come and weigh in on our budget for the coming year.
Great, thank you. Alderman Weggie?
No report.
Alderman Lockmiller?
No report.
Alderman Gould?
Yes, the only report I have is that our first Communications Committee meeting will be Tuesday, the 25th, at 6:30. So if you're interested in learning more about that committee and how we can continue to improve and evolve communications to residents, please join.
Thank you. Alderwoman O'Neal?
No report.
And Alderman Shelton?
No report.
Great. No, we got him. That brings us down to item seven, City Administrator Report. We have two items under that. The first is the 2021 audit presentation. I thought we were postponing that.
We are.
Okay.
This meeting, the auditor, Andrew Zabel, has a conflict tonight. He's in another city presenting their audit, and he would like to be here in person, so he's asked this be deferred to the November meeting, so he will be present at that time.
Great.
The second item, we have been talking for some time, particularly at Ways and Means, about how the city has seen a significant increase in the 1% countywide tax. And, you know, we've reached out to Missouri Department of Revenue, attempted to reach out to St. Louis County Treasurers Department, trying to confirm that these numbers are right. We even went to the extent of talking to other A cities that have significant retail in their town, asking if they've seen the kind of increase that we have. And they're saying, yes, we've seen increase, and it's due to inflation, labor shortage, supply chain, but we didn't specifically ask, well, what is the percentage of increase that you're seeing? So I've asked Dan Cook with Cook &amp; Riley, the city hired them many, many years ago, maybe eight, nine years ago, to start looking at, on a monthly basis, at the city's sales tax because of a similar error that happened back in 2010. And so it was Dan who caught this anomaly, and there's a memo in your packet that he co-wrote to explain what is going on. So Dan, if you, if the mayor's agreeable, to come to the podium to kind of give an overview.
Yeah, come on down, Dan. And while Dan's on his way down, just to put this in context for the public, this 1% sales tax, county sales tax, we projected for this year, in 2022, the City of Brentwood would realize about $5.4 million, $5.4 million just for that line item in the budget. And through the month of August, we'd already received $8.9 million, and through the month of September, I think it was $10 million. So that, again, is when we were expecting to receive $5.4 million. So at that, so when we got our first payment, which was about $2.1 million, when the month before was a little over $200,000, we thought there was, something wasn't right there. And so we thought that raised some flags, that we needed to address that, because there's just no explanation for why we would have received sales tax revenue just for that one item of $2.1 million. So as you can see, there is a huge discrepancy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dan. If you would just identify who you are.
Sure. My name is Daniel Cook. I'm with Cook &amp; Riley LLC, and as Bola pointed out, we've been looking at the sales taxes for the city, mostly from the Department of Revenue, to tell you the truth, for a number of years for the city now. We also do a little bit of work on the T-8 TIF, and it's because we actually view both of those that we were able to see from the T-8 side, the summary of this 205 tax that was just, obviously, to us at least, based on the historical precedent and the revenues that were coming into the city, were way overblown. I think in the memo, I think we concluded it was like, for the last five months, it's about 4.6 times the amount that you guys would normally receive from this tax. It was just incredibly wrong, and we just needed to notify the county as soon as we could and see if we could get to the bottom of this. And it's taken the county a number of months to respond, and I still don't think they've come up with the actual number yet. That's an issue.
I was supposed to hear from them this afternoon. When I spoke to them on Friday, the lady I spoke with indicated that they would have the numbers for me this afternoon, and I called her, and there was no response on the other side.
But looking at historical trends, we would expect, if we were going to see about $5.4 million on this line item for 12 months, I would imagine we would expect to receive at this point about three and a half, 3.75 million.
Right, right.
But in reality, we have received $10 million.
That's correct.
So there's a substantial overpayment by the county to us.
Right, and we could see that the amount that the county was receiving from the state, historically, you guys end up, because this is shared money with the B cities, you guys end up with about 60% to 65% normally. And not only were you getting more, you were getting more than 100%. So the county was actually distributing to you more than they were getting from the state. I mean, it's crazy.
Where's the money coming from?
Well, the county...
The county was paying us money that they weren't even receiving, is what I'm hearing from you.
I believe, although, again, we haven't gotten a clear explanation from the county that this was a coding issue and that the city was getting monies coded to Brentwood that weren't based on sales, that were actually made. So somebody here is getting a big shortfall.
Somebody in the county?
Somebody in the county.
Okay. And we put them on notice back in May or June of this year of, we didn't know what the issue was, what the cause was, but we knew that there was potentially an issue because, again, we received $2.1 million in one month, when historically, we would have received anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000.
The historical trend was, yeah, somewhere, some months were as high as $750,000, but never a seven-figure payment. So as soon as we started getting seven-figure payments, month after month after month, I mean, just a problem.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there wasn't anything that we didn't do, that we failed to do anything. As soon as we, the very first payment, we immediately put the county on notice that there was something going on.
That's my understanding, yes. And we certainly reached out to the Department of Revenue in there, too.
Okay, okay.
Mayor Dimmitt, I also have Gina Jarvis online, in case you all have any questions for her.
Okay.
Because she was also involved in the notification of the county and Missouri Department of Revenue as well.
Well, and I am going to turn the, allow the board to ask some questions here in just a second, but I just have a few more to follow up. So, and maybe you can't speak to this, maybe Gina can, or Bola. We're going to need, the expectation is that we're going to need to remit the overpayment back to the county.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But we want to verify...
What that amount is.
What that amount is.
Right.
So we're still waiting to hear from the county, but it could be maybe $5 million?
Approximately, Gina? I think initially, when I spoke to Gina, she said between two and four, and then, Dan, you've said upwards of maybe five or six. We really don't know.
I think we need the county to weigh in, but just from these last few months, yeah, it could be...
It's a substantial figure.
Five million or more.
It's a substantial figure.
And have we spent any of that money?
We have not.
Okay.
Not one cent.
I think that's going to be the real question. Okay. So we, this overpayment, we have been holding on to, so we have the ability to turn back over to the county?
Right.
The amount that we all agree upon, when we agree upon it?
Right.
Okay. Open up to the board. Alderman Weggie?
This $5 million windfall that we have, where is that money being stored right now?
Gina can answer that question. It's in our money market account, I believe.
Okay, so it's earning interest?
It's, yeah.
And if we have to pay it back, I assume we'll have to send it back with interest as well for the time we had it?
My argument would be, no, we shouldn't, since we put them on notice.
Right. That was my next question.
That's why I wanted to stress this.
We're paying money to kind of diagnose this issue on our side.
Right.
I mean, are we going to be on the hook for what we're paying Dan and Cook to solve this, or is that going to come out of the county somehow? And I'm sure nobody knows the answer to that.
Well, I think the one question is, but for our insistence that there was an issue, maybe this isn't even discovered.
Right.
Which is very problematic, considering the timing of this. As we're putting together our budget for 2023, we are basing our predictions for our revenue for 2023 based upon what's happening in 2022. And so we are looking at what we had received to date and basing our budget on that. Thankfully, because of our persistence, it was, we confirmed that there was a problem, so we've now, as you have, we've delivered to you all tonight revised pages for the proposed budget, scaling back our projections for our revenue. But those are great questions, Alderman Weggie, as to...
And do we, I mean, do we, I know it's a guess. I know there's a lot of guesses and a lot of I-don't-knows here, but do we think this is the last couple of months, or do we think this is endemic of the entire year? I mean, do we have any sense if we're going to be in a somewhat normal revenue year once this all shakes out?
I think this started back in the May-June timeframe. Everything before that was, I'll call it, in line with historical trends.
Okay.
I would certainly hope that next month's distribution goes back to being in line with historical trends, now that the county seems to be aware that there's an issue.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Dan, there are other taxes, sales tax areas seem to be trending as they would normally. Why is this one so out of whack compared to the other sales tax types that the county collects?
Again, I'm speculating a little bit, but this is the one that's probably the most complex tax, because this is the one that's subject to that logarithmic formula for sharing, whereas your average amount of sales tax continues to grow above what the average is throughout the county, that you are reduced based on that logarithmic formula, and there's more and more sharing to the B cities. So I'm guessing that there's simply more to the administration of this, but I don't know what broke between the May timeframe and the June timeframe.
It's the software that is used to do the calculation, and the difference, if you happen to have your 2023 recommended budget document, if you look at page 25, it breaks down the different sales tax rates that the city collects, and capital improvement tax, it's a quarter cent, and the city keeps 85% of that. Then stormwater, that's a quarter, and the city, quarter tax, and the city keeps 100% of that. So those are different ratio in terms of what the city keeps, what it gives to others.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Tice?
How confident are we in the county's calculation of this tax? And are, sort of referenced in the memo, but are we privy to seeing the formula and understanding if they're asking for the proper amount back? I mean, I know you can, you're really good at extrapolating what it should be, but how do we know what it actually is?
Without the county sharing the actual data and the actual computation, I don't think you can know for sure.
Are you comfortable that it has been done properly in the past?
Since they haven't shared the actual computation and the data, I can tell you that it's been done consistently in the past.
Consistently, correctly or incorrectly? We're not sure. But consistent.
Consistently. Okay. I know that's not what you want to hear, but with the DOR, we can get the dataset, and we do get it, and we look at that. I can't get, or haven't in the past been able to get, a similar dataset from the county.
Is there a reason it's not, that they don't have that public? What was your question? Is there a reason that that's not public at the county level? I mean, it seems that that's something that... I don't know. It's public money.
It would never be public-public, because it ties back to individual merchants, potentially. But if you sign a waiver of the confidentiality, you can have certain people look at it for purposes of auditing and tax administration at the state. I don't know why the county doesn't have a similar procedure in place.
There are a few of us in the city that are authorized to do that, because we've signed off on that, but not everybody gets to see. But the county does not have a similar process as the state does, which is what Dan was saying.
Well, it seems like...
We can certainly ask the question.
It seems like this is a time to ask that question, when their calculations are so drastically off. Thank you.
Alderman Shelton?
We, I know it hasn't been the same, obviously, this year is a huge anomaly, but if we have them dig into this and they find out that previous years, there's been errors, do they have the ability? Maybe that's a question for Kevin, or do we have any concern about that? Can they come back to us for previous years and say, we messed up a little bit here and there, and where does it end?
I know for normally, you know, if you're getting a tax refund, there is a limit to how far back you can go. As far as this sort of thing, I would think it would be governed by a statute of limitations, because it would be an action between two governmental entities, but I would think there is some finite timeline. I don't know to tell you exactly where that line would be drawn, though.
But we've not seen this in previous years, that, to this level.
No, because Dana has been here and doing the audit for us on a month-to-month basis.
And in prior years, it kind of tracked the previous years in terms of our sales tax revenue. You know, nothing stood out.
Right, not like this.
I mean, we were all coming in, we were very consistent on that 1%, so I have some confidence that it was certainly correct.
Absolutely.
This is the first time we've ever seen it like this. There's no indication, you would have no way of knowing how widespread this is throughout the county, would you, Dan?
Since I only see the data for this city, I do not know.
Okay.
I know Bola indicated, she made some calls, but I don't think she got specific answers as to the nature or magnitude of the differences the other cities were seeing.
And I think Bola had mentioned a pool A versus, or an A city versus a B city. Can you explain, just in layman's terms, the difference between that?
Most of the cities that are highly retailed had an election at one point in time, dates back a while now, to be an A city, which basically meant point-of-sale. You got to keep most of the sales taxes that were made within your municipality, and then you were sharing the other portion of that through this logarithmic formula with the B cities that tended to be less retailed. So the B cities got distributions based on average county distribution or population versus the population of that particular. So that was pro-rata based upon the population, whereas the A cities are based upon the actual sales that take place within the geography of the city.
So the B cities are what we've heard as pool cities?
They're the pool cities.
Pool cities, okay. Point-of-sale and pool cities. Brentwood's a point-of-sale city, or an A city.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, just make sure your mic's on, thanks.
Has anyone ever revisited that since it was constructed so long ago? Chesterfield now is certainly viable, and to have Chesterfield take our money just doesn't seem quite right. There are other cities that could benefit, but has anyone looked at the makeup of A and B and said, maybe it's time to tweak this a bit?
I think there has been state legislation that's changed that, and Chesterfield was certainly driving that, as I understood it.
Yes. Chesterfield has tried, because Chesterfield, I believe, is both A and B. So there's even been efforts where some cities have hired a lobbyist to help change this with the introduction of a bill in Jeff City and haven't really been successful. So, yes.
Alderman Gould?
So, I mean, we're talking about real tax money, though, right? It's not like the number was inflated somewhere. So you would think that some of these B cities, if we saw a tremendous gain, they've been, they should have noticed a loss, right? I mean, but it seems like everybody you've talked to said that, oh, yeah, we're seeing gains.
I only talked to A cities.
Okay.
I did not talk to, and I probably should have asked Pat Kelly, but I didn't go that far.
And it may not be the pool that's short, it may be other A cities. There's no way for us to determine that.
Okay.
And if I could, you asked about, you know, how can we verify the formula and such? Let me just give you an example. Definition of the term, adjusted county average for distribution of sales tax between A and B cities. A city, town, and village shall receive that portion of the revenues arising from sales occurring within the municipality that remains after deducting therefrom an amount equal to the cumulative sales tax revenues arising from sales within the municipality, multiplied by the percentage, which is the sum of 10%, multiplied by the percentage of the population of the unincorporated county which has been annexed or incorporated after April 1, 1993, and the percentage, if greater than zero, equal to the product of 8.5 multiplied by the logarithm to base 10 of the product of 0.035 multiplied by the total cumulative... Would you like me to go on?
Well, someone understands that.
8.5, you said?
8.5, yes. Log 10.
Okay.
I would also add that, in the past, at least, the Missouri Department of Revenue has generally not reached back more than three years to adjust. And they generally do it by withholding future payments.
And did you say, I'm sorry, were you done, Jeff? Alderman? Okay. And did you say this has happened one other time? 2010, a coding issue?
That the city experienced, yes.
Okay. And, but it wasn't that we received too much money?
It was that the money we received, yeah.
Okay.
I'd rather not.
Okay, let's move on, then, okay. But I think Alderwoman Tice raises some excellent points, and that is, as we say, you know, trust but verify. How can we, how can we verify, if we ever get the number from the county, that it, in fact, is the correct number without doing the calculation that our city attorney just gave us?
The one guy who knew how to do it retired.
What's that?
The one person who knew how to do this, the guy who wrote that retired.
Okay.
Just one more thought. I mean, when we started Brentwood Bound, we did a full audit on our sales tax. Remember, we hired a company to come in and do that. It seems like that would be an artifact, and we should have confidence going backwards that everything is good.
Right.
But that might be something that would be helpful in the future, so just throwing that out as a reminder.
Okay. Well, I wanted Dan to make this presentation, not because there's any action that's needed, but I just wanted to bring you up to speed on this, because in my mind, this is a very, very important issue, not just for Brentwood, but for St. Louis County and for the other municipalities that may be in a similar position as us and will be asked to return the money, and hopefully, they have the money to remit back to the county. So I'm sure we'll hear something more, as we'll keep you apprised of what we hear from the county. So unless there's any other questions, we'll release Dan. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us down to the consent agenda, under which we have five items. Are there any questions or requests to move any of the items from the consent agenda? Alderwoman Tice?
I just have a question about the, something on the warrant, on the warrant list, a lateral sewer issue.
Yes.
Could we get some explanation of the lateral sewer project at 8908 Bridgeport?
Would you refresh board docs?
I did, I mean...
Did you see the explanation?
Well, Dan's coming down. Dan, can you answer Alderwoman Tice's questions?
Yes, this particular one has had issue after issue. The person bought the home in 2015, and then, went through my records earlier this afternoon, I pulled up 10 different backups since the ownership, since 2015. And I talked to the homeowner, he said he actually had more, but some of them he didn't turn in. You know, the ones that he definitely had issues with were going back in 2017, that's back when we used to pay for everything, you know, flushing and cleaning and all that. So one bill I know was Gateway, they flushed out the lateral, that was like $945. Then he had another backup, which caused them to come back out in March. They pulled out tree roots, more debris, rock. That bill was $7,668.75. Then he had two backups in 2019, then he had three backup, no, four backups in 2022. So we had January of '22, then, of course, the crazy rains in July, which left three to four feet of water in the basement multiple times. And then again, in August, the unit, you know, furnace he just put in was flooded a few days after it was installed. So had we gone back to 2017 and replaced the pipe, which probably should have been done because of all the roots and it was pretty flat, then we wouldn't be doing the repair today. Well, September is when they did the repair. What they did was they actually ran a new pipe to the MSD pipe that's in the backyard. The old setup was it was connected to a clay pipe that was closer to the home that actually ran across his neighbor's property. So this trues it up and makes it perpendicular, it keeps it on his property. It makes it a lot simpler, and he hasn't had any issues since it's been done. But the neighbors had theirs done in the past, and theirs are fine.
So is the rationale that this is on the warrant list because we didn't do it right the first time?
That's the way we feel, that it's a legacy problem, that if you go back to 2017, instead of paying, you know, the $7,700, which actually was a bargain, you know, instead of replacing it then, we thought that that would be the end of it. You know, you cleaned it out, you ran hydroflushers between the neighboring properties, shouldn't have any more issues. Well, that wasn't the case. You know, the person's had, like I said, 10 backups that we've recorded, and he said he's probably closer to 13, in just a six-year span. So I think this is... So I think this has made it right, and, you know, that'll be done with it. Otherwise, he's going to have problems, and you're going to pay $3,500, which is the current cap. And if you keep doing that, you'll eventually blow over the $13,000 mark.
It might have been a topic that could have come up at Public Works.
It should have.
Yeah.
And it did not, in retrospect. It should have been brought up to Public Works. And when Alderman Lockmiller called me, emailed me about it earlier, and Dan started explaining that the city, in fixing the first problem, connected the stormwater to a sewer. And this is something that MSD does not allow. And so when a decision was made that it's on the city, we created this problem, it would have been ideal to present it to Public Works, and it wasn't. But since that conversation this morning, that property owner has agreed that they would be willing to sign a waiver that this makes the city whole. This makes him whole. So it's just a reminder that things like this for the department need to come through Public Works committee.
Any other questions about any of the items under the consent agenda? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tice.
Yes.
Alderman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Wegge.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal.
And we got a second on that. Any other, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. I'm sorry, we had one, I'm sorry, it was, so we had a six ayes and one no. So, I guess we can make that change when we bring it up next, next meeting. Are there any other changes? Alderman Wegi.
Yeah, one is just a error correction. So, section 340265, paragraph D, item three, this is an error and it was talked about at public safety. So, from the northern end of Salem Road west to Sicilia, that's not what the intent was there, because that's a narrow fence thing. So, that was intended to be east. And I know that was talked at public safety significantly. So, I believe the intent of what was coming to us would have that corrected.
What, what is it, but should it be?
East.
East.
Instead of west.
Instead of the word west, it should be east.
It should say east to Rosalie-Litzinger.
What?
Yeah, read it out exactly how it should be, Alderman Wegi.
So, item three currently says, "From the northern end of Salem Road west to Sicilia."
Yes, sir.
And it should say, "From the northern end of Salem Road east to Rosalie slash Litzinger Ave."
Which would actually make the prior one included in that section anyway, right?
Yeah.
We don't need a motion of that effect, right? Since it was...
Well, I mean, I went to all the public safety, that was, that was the discussion they had there.
We will, we'll, we'll trust you.
And I got one more, but I think Jeff has...
Yeah, go right ahead.
Well, I think Jeff has one, so give me one minute to get ready.
He's... Wait for you, Alderman Wegi.
Well, basically, I, so, I went to all the public safety. I don't understand the licensing with Brentwood, basically. The discussion there was that Brentwood would not actually be verifying anything on the carts. They would not be verifying that it's the correct kind of windshield. They would not be verifying really any aspect of the requirements that we're putting forward, because there's some liability that if Brentwood is verifying those, then they're, you know, asserting that they are safe. And so, I don't understand the requirement to do this licensing. We don't do this for dogs. We don't do this for cars. We don't do this for really anything that I can think of. It just seems like another step that, and I'm honestly more concerned about our staff having to come up with a new process and handle these. They're not going to be frequent. They're going to be, you know, one every couple of months, and it just seems like a distraction from everybody with, with no benefits whatsoever. So, my motion is basically to remove the requirement, and I'm trying to find it multitasking, to register with the city of Brentwood, these carts.
Second.
Section 340.280 subsection B, as in Boeing, on page five.
So much better at this than I am, yeah. Whatever, I assume he's right.
That's correct. That's, that's the section that you're talking about.
Never trust. Trust but verify.
I seconded that.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. What was the rationale for putting that in there in the first place? Anybody know?
I believe it was so that the person would actually register it. Otherwise, how do you know when someone buys it and then they're just driving it around? You know, if they never either went to the police or came to City Hall and said, "Hey, guess what? I bought a low-speed vehicle." You know, how do you know that it has headlights, stop lamps, all that stuff? It was just an initial look. It's like, it has these things. You're not verifying whether it's safe or not. You're just kind of looking to make sure it has the criteria. And then giving them a sticker and then putting it in some sort of database.
But, if we have it in our ordinances, if somebody's driving around without those, those things, then the police could pull them over and give them a ticket, right? I mean, so, you, you observe an infraction and then take care of that, instead of having the, the process and procedure and the cost of staff and stickering and all of that stuff. I think that's excessive for, right now, four, four vehicles in, in all of Brentwood that may stay four vehicles for a long time. Who knows?
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so the motion is to remove section 340.280 subsection B. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Okay, we'll make that change. Anybody else? Any other changes? Alderman Wegi.
Going back to 340265D, which is the paths, the paths that we're allowing, I just, I make a motion basically that we add a little bit of language that pedestrians have the right of way over these. The biggest concern that I've heard from people is that these are going to be on the paths, and I think very clear language that the pedestrians do have the right of way would be, would be beneficial here.
Okay.
I'd second that.
All right.
But I'd also add potentially cyclists, pedestrians and cyclists have the right of way. If, if you would...
The last sentence of the provision is not adequate?
It, it seems squishy to me. I mean, so to take extra care to avoid pedestrians using their pathway, I think the intent of that is correct, but I, I don't know. I mean, how do you... It, it seems like a, not exactly defined. If we say that, you know, the pedestrians or the, and the bicycles have the right of way, that's a little more concise to me.
It's unlikely that the right of way, the right of way is, is a conflicting movement priority. I wouldn't think that there would be conflicting movements between...
I, the residents are concerned that they're going to get blown off the pass by these. So, how do we put language in that that's not going to happen? Or it should not be happening?
I, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm not certain how to express that, but, I mean, ordinarily, if we establish a duty of care on the part of the operator of the vehicle, that's how we allocate responsibility in the roadways. But we'll put in something about right of way.
Is, is, is the way that it's worded right now, would that equate or amount to some type of a traffic infraction if they violated that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They already exercise the highest degree of care.
Okay.
The standard for motor vehicle accidents.
Right, right. I mean, other than a cause of action for civil, civil cause of action, but it also formed the basis for some type of a citation to be issued.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If that's the case, that, that would alleviate my concerns, actually, because if, if somebody is driving dangerously, then the residents that are walking would have a recourse, and we would have a recourse, the item and ticket.
Alderman Lockmueller.
I think, Your Honor, at the meeting that you attended, I think you had mentioned that there needed to, staff needed to come up with some type of signage for these areas that would be both cart and pedestrian used, to make everyone aware that there could be a meeting of these two types of modes of transportation, walking or, and I think we task that to the, to staff at Public Works to start to come up with that type of signage.
Yeah, I thought there, there are infinite number of ways to put pedestrians who are using this path on, on notice, that there could also be a low-speed vehicle on that path. Because I am concerned that if somebody's walking and they, and you don't see it coming at you, it's coming from behind, you know? And, and you have a careless person behind the car, and the pedestrian has no expectation that there might be a low-speed vehicle on that path. But if there's some way to, because it's not all pathways in the city. If it was every pathway in the city, then it's a no-brainer. Pedestrians should need to know. But it's only on select pathways where these low-speed vehicles would be permitted. Well, how's a pedestrian supposed to know that? Without some type of communication, whether it be a sign, or what I had suggested is putting striping on those pathways where the low-speed vehicles would be permitted. So, as you're walking on that, it's pedestrian, you can say, "Oh, this is also a pathway that I have to share," or it's going to be some type of a low-speed vehicle. I mean, that, again, I think there's infinite number of ways to do it, but I do think that's, it makes sense to, to alert the pedestrians. And it also helps the low-speed vehicle users to know you're on the correct path, because to ask low-speed vehicle users to memorize this ordinance and say, "Well, it's, it's east of, of the end of Salem to Rosalie slash Litzinger Ave," good luck. I think you'd be better off if you could somehow designate that for both users of the pedestrians and the low-speed vehicle users, which I agree with you. We can leave that up to staff to, but that's, that was my reasoning for wanting that. So, well, that's the thought, that we'll do it that way. Okay. Alderman Gould.
I have one question. This, this may be for Chief Spease, if he's in, oh, there you are, blending in there. So, for Rock Hill and Ladue, if there are residents of Brentwood that are, for example, live south of Manchester, and the only, you know, logical crossing of Manchester Road is, is at Bremerton, and then they want to go back home, or if somebody wants to go to, let's say, our festivals that we have down at the, the sports complex and not drive a car, taking up space down there and everything, they would have to travel south on Bremerton, which would be Rock Hill side. Is that something that you all would have a conversation with their department as far as, you know, having some leniency on whether they have ordinances on the books or not? But you would...
We certainly could do that. There's no guarantee, though. They're, they're certainly able to write an ordinance violation for that.
If they don't have anything on the books, they, according to our city attorney, we, they could, that technically means they prohibit it. Is that correct?
And I think the concern there would be the citizens that complain to their departments. If that happens, they're gonna, they will write tickets for it. If they get heat from the elected officials or the citizens about that, that our folks are using their, they will be writing tickets. And I don't think there's anything we can do to stop that.
And then same, same applies to, to Litzinger, you know? I mean, if you're, if we have down the road, if we build a new, new park behind the church there, and somebody wants to go up there, but then coming back, they're on, for a very short period of time, they're on, on Rock Hill.
May not be an issue at all.
May not be an issue, but...
Might not, but...
Okay. I just didn't know if there was communication with the department.
Alderman Lockmueller.
I just had one more thing. You know, this is kind of why it was brought to the full board, so we could get this kind of input beyond just the Public Safety Committee. And I know a lot of citizens have chimed in regarding this hot topic. But, you know, this is an ordinance that can be amended. We can evolve with it. We've got five golf carts in all of Brentwood right now. I don't think it's going to be an epidemic of golf carts going awry. You know, if the population picks up and we have problems on our pathways or in our streets, we can address it again later.
Okay.
Mayor Dimon.
Yes.
I just want to remind the board that there was a public comment.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So, with that, then I guess we will just, unless there's anything else, we will just have staff make those, those changes and bring it back to you all at the, at the next meeting. That brings us down to bill number 6426. Can we get a first reading of 6426 by title only, please?
Bill number 6426, first reading and ordinance approving agreement, an agreement for water facility relocations for the Brentwood Bound Improvement Project.
Thank you. Dan?
This one's pretty straightforward. There's a fire hydrant over by the Breckenridge Industrial Court Bridge. It was identified on the plans, but when Missouri American did their relocation of the main that was on the bridge, the hydrant wasn't included. The hydrant needs to be moved to accommodate the new bridge. If you go out there, the new bridge is slightly to the east of the old bridge and at a higher elevation. So, when they go to relocate this hydrant, it's going to be north of Bowser House on the, near that empty lot. I believe it's parcel 103 that the city owns. So, they just need to get an easement from the city so that they can put the hydrant, it's like a 15 by 15 easement. They'll put the new hydrant in, pull the old hydrant out of the way, and then the approach can be built.
Okay.
That's it.
Any questions for Dan on this request? We would like to have a second read on that tonight, so to that...
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for a second read. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of bill number 6426 by title only, please?
Bill number 6426, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance approving an agreement for water facility relocations for the Brentwood Bound Improvement Project.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to perfect bill number 6426 into ordinance form?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmueller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, bill 6426 will become ordinance 5056.
Great, thank you. Brings us down to bill number 6427. Can we get a first reading by title only, please?
Bill number 6427, first reading and ordinance approving a physically disabled parking space at 8935 Moritz Ave and installation of, I presume, signs relating thereto.
Thank you. Dan?
We've brought these before you, actually, to Public Safety and to the board, so we've done this before on Madge, Melvin, and now Moritz. So, this 8935 Moritz is just, I believe it's east of high school on the north side. The only prohibition on parking on that section of Moritz is on the south side, so we can't actually put an ADA sign on the north side near this property, and that's what the request is for.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Dan? Would like to have a second read? Can we get a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that motion for a second read? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of bill number 6427, please?
Bill number 6427, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance approving a physically disabled parking space at 8935 Moritz Ave and installation of signage relating thereto.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to perfect 6427 into ordinance form?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmueller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, bill number 6427 will become ordinance 5057.
Thank you. Brings us down to bill number 6428. Can we get a first reading by title only, please?
Bill number 6428, first reading and ordinance authorizing the city of Brentwood to participate in the Missouri firefighters' critical illness trust and pool, and further authorizing the mayor to execute such documents as may be necessary for the city's participation therein.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening. So, I presented this ordinance to both Public Safety and Ways and Means. Cancer in the fire service has become at a critical level. The state of Missouri approved this critical illness pool a couple of years ago. They did receive a grant from the Division of Fire Safety to pre-fund the pool, and it, they began accepting members earlier this year. So, in preparation for 2023, benefit package for the fire department, I did include this in my proposed budget. And to join the pool, we do have to pass an ordinance to participate. We answered a lot of questions at both committees. Certainly welcome to ask any additional this evening.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. What was the, I, I see in here, Ways and Means came back with a positive recommendation unanimously?
Correct.
How about Public Safety? Did they take a vote?
Public Safety did not. They deferred it to Ways and Means.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Do we have any questions for the chief on this? We're just doing a first read on this tonight?
Yes.
So, if there are no questions... Oh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Tice?
I have a new question. I had a lot of questions in Ways and Means. So, is this something that we could get regular actuarial reports, like, once a year, so that we could see how many firefighters are taking, you know, unfortunately might have to take advantage of...
Correct.
Tip, tipping, and dipping into this trust, and then how much money is in it? Because it does sound like there's a way to, to stop paying at some point.
Correct.
But it just seems like the, if a lot of firefighters tap into this, the liability to the city might be pretty high. So, if there's a way we could sort of, once a year, have a reporting of what's going on with the solvency of the trust?
Absolutely. So, the members of the trust, we would be, obviously, become members of that trust through their regular reporting and meeting process. We certainly would be privy to that information.
That's something, then, that could be a regular Ways and Means item once a year?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, we will see you at the, the next meeting, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us down to bill number 6429. Can we get a first reading by title only, please?
Bill number 6429, first reading and ordinance amending ordinance 4026 and approving site development, a site development plan and conditional use permit for RRT Restaurants LLC, doing business as Sol E. LeMans Mexican Grill Restaurant, located within the Hanley Station Development at 1221 Strassner Drive.
Great, thank you.
Good evening again. Since this was part of the public hearing earlier in the meeting, I won't repeat myself, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Great. Do we have any questions? And you all have the, all the documents. And if there are no questions...
Motion for a second reading of bill number 6429.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for a motion, for a second reading. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of bill 6429 by title only, please?
Bill number 6429, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance amending ordinance 4026 and approving a site development plan and conditional use permit for RRT Restaurants LLC, doing business as Sol E. LeMans Mexican Grill Restaurant, located within the Hanley Station Development at 1221 Strassner Drive.
Thank you.
Motion to perfect bill number 6429 in the ordinance form.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to perfect 6429, bill number 6429 in ordinance form. Any discussion on that? Roll call?
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
C.
Alderman Gould?
C.
Alderman Lockmueller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, bill 6429 will become ordinance 5058.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Welcome. And that brings us down to the last, well, no, not the last item, but next to the last item, Resolution 1407. A resolution approving an agreement with Clayton Holdings LLC and authorizing certain other actions for the replacement of a fire engine.
Very good, yes. So, again, this was presented briefly to Public Safety and then deferred to Ways and Means Committee. In February of this year, we proposed to the city administrator to begin the replacement process of a fire engine. Things have changed drastically in the market of the fire truck industry, as well as the financial industry. So, our committee has come together. They've developed a set of specifications. We do have a purchase agreement from a Pierce dealer, McQueen Equipment, that's our local dealer. The, trying to stay up with the industry, we sign the agreement, we order the truck now, we anticipate delivery in 2025, more than likely around July of 2025. So, per the agreement, Brentwood does not pay for that truck until the truck is delivered. We would forego a prepayment, pre-billed discount on the payment of roughly $40,000. However, things have changed financially for Brentwood's position. If we do not finance it and we pay outright, we save $300,000 in financing fees. So, I bring this for you tonight, asking to approve it. There is a six and a half percent price increase November 1st. So, this is the timing. There are some neighboring cities that are not able to meet that deadline, so...
So, so in essence, instead of financing the purchase, we pay cash?
Correct. But the expense, again, doesn't happen until 2025.
And by doing that, we're saving over $300,000 in financing charges, interest charges?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any questions? And where's, where the, where's the money coming from?
Capital improvement.
Can you talk to that, or...
The, the interest we're earning on the county's money?
Just waiting for that. You're welcome. Okay?
My understanding, the city had been assigning funds in capital improvement for equipment replacement, and that is where this is coming from.
Right. That's correct.
Okay. All right. Do we have any questions for the chief on this? As this is a resolution, we will be asking you to vote on this tonight, instead of doing a staggered reading. So, if you have any questions now, it's the time to, to ask. Alderman Lockmueller?
I guess, chief, the reason why we need to do it soon is, I think you had mentioned something about the flooding in Florida, the storm, hurricane, rather.
Correct. The demand for fire apparatus is extreme right now, and Pierce is expanding. They're trying to add to the facility. They've reached out and started trades into high schools now, trying to recruit employment or, you know, employees. And then we have the hurricane come in that flooded fire apparatus, and the state of Florida is the largest space for Pierce fire apparatus. So, the demand's just going to keep going up.
And our current vehicle's 20 years old as it stands now, right?
This year. Correct. It'll be 23 years old.
Please. And what happens to that one when we do get, if the board votes to approve this, and if we get it in 2025? What happens to the one that's replaced? And do we sell that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We have always sold them.
Idea of what we, what we'll get for that? Any realize on that?
Gov deals, right?
Gov deals?
Put it on gov deals.
That's what we're good?
Correct. That's what we've done historically.
You can buy that, fire truck.
No, we can't. I don't think I can buy it. I don't think an elected official can buy it. So, okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, I guess I take a motion to approve Resolution 1407.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there are two versions of Resolution 1407 in the packet with two different facts. So...
Okay.
If we, if we might designate that, I presume the intent is to adopt the resolution for a direct purchase from McQueen. So, it was the resolution of the city of Brentwood, Missouri, approving an agreement with McQueen Equipment LLC, a Delaware corporation doing businesses, McQueen Emergency, and authorizing certain other actions.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.[1582.38]
Alderman Lockmueller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Brings us to the last item, budget amendment, request to purchase additional police vehicle. Chief?
Thank you, sir. We also had a difficult time this year with vehicles. We ordered our, we have three vehicles in the 22 budget, ordered them early this year, and it was canceled by Dodge in March. We subsequently immediately ordered Chevys, Tahos. They are still not built, and we're not 100% sure they're even coming in. They were telling us they'll be here before the end of the year. So, our challenges are similar to Ronnie's, in that just getting these cars is, is a real challenge for ours. Coincidentally, the City of Maplewood ordered a, a car they're not going to use, a Ford Tahoe. So, that vehicle may be available, if it's built, it may be available.